I'll call to order the meeting of the Bucksport Planning Board for Tuesday, March fifth, twenty twenty four. Roll call.
George Hansen.
Here.
Richard Peterson.
Here.
Michael Hayder.
Here.
Terry Doty.
Here.
Crystal Harland.
Here.
Jay Do Ross.
Here.
And Mark Ness-Lusen.
Here.
Item two, review and acceptance of minutes of the meeting of January two, twenty twenty four. Courses of the board.
I have no comments. I'll make a motion to approve minutes.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve. Any discussion need to be on it? All in favor of accepting? Chair's report. I do not have any report for this month. Code Enforcement Officer's report.
I have nothing to report this month.
Unfinished business? None. New business. Plan review and please excuse me with how I'm going to pronounce these because I know I'm going to be wrong. Uh, is that Chali?
Chalet, Chalet Restaurant.
Chalet Restaurant. And the applicant, I am going to spell this because I, I don't want to embarrass you by the way I pronounce it, okay? Uh, V E A W D A O. N A P A P O M P I P A T. Is the applicant. Location fifty-two Main Street, map thirty-two, lot twelve. Uh, anyone wish to speak? Please step forward and come to the podium and introduce yourself.
So I just, um, my name is, we are just like to miss you guys all.
Aye.
So we are new for the Bucksport and then I have been talked to for many time by email. I am issued all your offer and guideline. So we plan to open the just a takeout will set in Bucksport. And then I think we're gonna do just takeout, no dine, no sit down. And then I have check out with the code that we do not need any bathroom for the people.
Hmm, correct.
For the restaurant. So I just want to make sure that. But in the future, if we do well, we might do dine and then we might have to submit another application.
Yeah, that would be different, different than that. So there's a bathroom for employees, but there's no bathroom for the public.
Right, exact.
But where it's takeout only, it's not required.
Well, take over.
Anything else you'd care to share with us?
And then we think we're gonna, the first time we think like people got, I think people like exciting and then we're gonna start like uh, three day or four day a week until like everything because we have the experience in the Blue Hill and elsewhere that the town, the first time that we open, we all got too many people over volume and then it's over. We could not handle it all. See, we think we just want to take it easy in Bucksport like three day and everything smoothly. We just keep going open. I think I might start at the Thai food first and then after people spend the time and then we just do sushi or I might do sushi first because we think we don't want to open everything at the same time and then we got over volume, you know?
Sure.
Mm-hmm.
Like it's happened in Blue Hill.
Did you bring any samples?
I also.
Uh, anything else that you, you need, you care to add?
Uh, no, not.
Okay. Uh, the board, we've, we've, we've had paperwork on this and I hope everyone has reviewed it.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Uh, does anyone on the board have any questions?
I thought the plan was great. I have no questions.
Anybody?
Um, well, just a couple of technical things that I, I looked at that, and I'm not, not sure that, that you can respond to that. One of the things, um, between like the fire, the fires in the stove that has open flame.
Right.
There's supposed to be a significant distance and I don't see that.
It's been approved by the Fire Marshal.
On the plan, that's right.
Hmm?
The state Fire Marshal approved it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it appears that you have a plate there. Maybe, maybe that's how
I don't know.
they're getting around it, but
Usually when
It doesn't have that.
Usually they just like put like aluminum or something. Let's say the stove in here, we, we should do it always so they put something against so they don't attach to each other between the stove and the fry.
Mm-hmm.
So basically, uh, Charlie, he usually had to order some part of it and then he just do it by himself because he doesn't want like when he cook right and then the fry. So we have to put something like between so that the fry don't get attached to each other. Even we got the system, alarm system, sorry thing, but we, we also have to protect ourselves when we cook, you know?
It's got the anse system as well.
Yeah, we got.
It's got the anse system.
Got the alarm.
Right, it's a, you know, there's a fire suppression system built into the wood. I saw that when I got to the last page.
Yes.
One of the things on that typically it has an affluable link that sets that off and like I didn't see that. It, it mentioned a pull station that's quite a distance from us, so may, it, it may have both.
Uh-huh.
I, I, my, my assumption is it probably has both because typically there's a flueable link in that, in that system. If you do get a flame, it operates automatically.
Yeah, we have the flame between. But ultimately I have to check all that, uh, with the wood guy and then the guy that put the, uh, fire system to make sure everything is up to code. Because I'm not hundred percent know about the code. And then the guy have me talk, have to check to make sure everything had to ma- match with the code before he able to install everything. We, because we don't want to put it and leave work and leave pair for him.
Right.
And rest of town.
I was really, really pleased to see the, the work that went into the plans. It's a good job. Uh, only one wall was fire rated. That was around the stairs.
Yes.
The rest really don't seem to be. But it was a nice di- separation between the roof too that, uh, we addressed with the tolerating.
Anybody else?
Um, so the exhaust vent will be on the street side of the roof or the, am I looking at that correctly?
It'll be probably yes, but it'll be near the peak. I probably have a different view here. I'll see.
I was looking at that and I'm just wondering about like noise, whether, whether it's operating.
I don't know that it would make much difference since it's above the roof line anyway, but I, I don't know what they could do about it. Going straight up is the, the most effective.
Right, no, I, I, way to prevent grease fires, so. Yeah, right. I just, no, I'm just, I'm, I'm, so there would be, that exhaust would be sticking up on Main Street. As you look at it, like aluminum or not, not aluminum, but um, whatever, yeah, clicking on that.
I think the traffic in Bucksport, it make more noise than wood.
Yeah, I mean, I.
When the summer, people are the traffic.
Yeah, you never hear mains, uh, exhaust man.
It's made a little noise.
You can see that from Main Street as well. It's pretty quiet.
Okay.
Yeah, it isn't like a jet going off.
No, I just, uh. It looks, it could be wrong, but it looks like there's something on the sides of this that are built on and the duct goes up in between it. I don't know if you can see that.
Yeah, I s- Probably it's late.
But so I know one of the big questions was, and I, I mentioned it to Julie, but I, and I thought she'd be here tonight, but she's not, so I don't know.
Yeah. No, she went to another state.
Oh, um, did she mention it to you about, we had questions about the, uh,
Dumpster.
dumpster, yes. So what is your plan for that?
Yeah. I, 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 yeah, she, she emailed me about the dumpster. People so concerned about the smell and everything. We usually like hide in the Blue Hill and but elsewhere we usually hide the pass control that they come there every month to make sure like put the track, mouse tag, everything around the building to make sure that we, we don't get the mouse inside, inside the restaurant. And then for the dumpster, I think in Bucksport, underside is a overflow real water, right? People walk by and don't want to see like we're gonna put like, I talked to my construction guy, he gonna put like a some frame or something to make it looks nice. So people don't even know that it's the dumpster or anything.
Okay.
But I might have to, but when, when the time, they, they usually to dump, they, they, they usually come in like two time a week.
Two times a week, yeah.
But it depend like in the winter, we not that busy. They might do just two time, but when we got busy, they like four or four, four or five time right now. We just
A week?
Right, in Blue Hill, we got super busy, but in the winter, we, we very slow. They do like two time in elsewhere. They do like four time in winter.
Okay. Now, is, are they planning on putting it like up on the grass behind the building?
I think they're gonna put it somewhere in the back, but we, we doesn't know what exactly
Yeah.
that we're gonna put it in.
Okay.
But I, I, but when they come to dump, they come, come with a big truck, right? And then I, I'm concerning about what people might be might not want to see like when the, where they are dumping all the trash with the big truck. I might have to talk like pay extra money for them that maybe they can come out like after will set hour, like sometime, you know, to pick up all the trash.
Oh, for, for the dumpster, yeah.
Yeah, because right now in Blue Hill, they just come what they want, because no one care. In Bucksport, I, I'm not sure people might concern about them. My mod, they might not want to see the big truck coming to dump the chat or something.
Truck could have dis- diff- difficulty down here during the day because it's pretty busy.
I have to talk to them.
Yeah.
Is Blue Hill a takeout only?
No, takeout and dine.
Okay. Uh, if you're gonna be only takeout, I can't imagine you would generate a whole lot of trash as compared to a sit-down restaurant.
I don't know, well, food waste and stuff is the main concern, I think, is smells, especially summer, you know, you get the heat and the but it sounds like if you're gonna have it emptied often and it's gonna be screened and
Yeah.
you know?
What was the plan for the sign?
What is the plan for the sign?
Yeah.
For the restaurant sign?
Is it going on the building or is it going?
That, that, I think we're gonna put one in the building and one up front.
Up front.
So people can see that this side. When people walk this side, they can't see it. And then when people walk this side, we're gonna can't see it.
Which is fine.
I think, I think
If it complies with the sign ordinance.
I think we're gonna have people walk into this way, go to the restaurant instead of walk into this way.
So go on the side around the building on that side entrance?
Uh, it's same like a town hall.
Yeah.
Because in the future, I think if we do very well, they said the construction guy, they said they're gonna make some, some like something like people that can see like we put the picnic table or something that people can hang out during the summer.
Yeah.
So my, we, we have that to get a pool from the town to put the picnic table.
Uh, you'd have to talk to me and Rich. That, that's, that's a town thing, not a planning board thing, but yeah.
Oh, okay. I'll check that.
There, there's already a, quite a few picnic tables along the waterfront for people to
Yeah, people to hang out, sit on it.
to sit and eat and eat their ice cream and all different things, so.
Because we don't have, uh, eating, but some people might like to sit on it.
Oh, sure, yeah, yep.
Are you gonna have Thai tea?
I do have one. I'll bring yours first.
Do you have any more questions? Does that address your concerns?
Oh, hi, uh, my apologies. Uh, Donald Avern and Deb Avern, we are the owners of fifty-four Main Street next to, um, her building. And our only concern was the dumpster and its location because if it's closer to us, it would render our property, our apartment undesirable. Because, you know, the front entrance to that apartment is off of this parking lot, if you will. So if the dumpster is located closer to our building, that would be very undesirable to anybody living there. So our only recommendation would be if the dumpster could be put closer to the town office perhaps, um, instead of closer to us.
Because you don't have a person living there overnight and your offices aren't gonna be looking down upon the dumpster.
Yeah.
Again, we're all in favor of businesses on Main Street. Main Street is the backbone of a community and it's good for our business and good for town. So we've not kept people's business. Just the dumpster was a concern, not one of the things.
In my mind, I was kind of thinking that because you're putting in the, um, oil and water, um, a grease trap and separator there. Um, and that's gonna be in the ground back here, um, and that's concrete tank.
Basically, in the result, we have two, have two tank. One is for the grease tap when like people cooking and they, they dump the oils and then they just pick up the oil to recycle and another one just to dump it.
Yeah.
So basically, we just need two.
Yeah, so I was thinking that same area where that is, is where the dumpster could be because you only need to get out that grease trap once, twice a year to clean it out.
Can you show us please in, in the layout where that would be?
They should, they, they usually come like six month to clean up the grease.
And again, we're very supportive of the restaurant coming in. We're really excited.
Let's see here. Uh, something else. So, uh, bear with me for a second. So, hopefully that'll
A little close.
Get a better.
Yeah, on that map too, suppose that we have to borrow that parking spot and she's gonna second to load that parking spot.
Correct. Um, so the, somewhere right about where that finger is, is, is the back door to that building.
Mm-hmm.
And I believe that the waistline comes out just to the right, if you're looking that way. Just to the right of the door, so on the town office side of the door.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so they are hoping to put the grease trap in the ground right there so that the waistline is straight into it and then straight out. Um, so, um, my, the only problem with that is if there's cars parked here during the day, like you said, the, the truck may not be able to get to it. So it would have to be either on the weekends or in the evening.
Terms of dumpster, would that be, I think?
There's also, isn't there handicap parking signs right there?
No.
No, handicap parking's on the other side.
Was there some sort of parking signs there? I feel like there's a post or something that's over here on this side.
There's reserved signs for her and for Deb's tenant.
So how would the dumpster truck get in there?
Well, that's why I'm saying if it comes during work hours.
Yeah, but the so, the post is there.
Oh, we can fix that.
So the posts are, excuse me, the posts are to the left of that door.
Yeah.
And the spot closer to the former green, their building.
Yeah.
So there are no other signs where that is. It's usually where I park my car, but I can park up my Main Street.
Well, I was just thinking if, if the truck comes to back up, they're gonna back up to the dumpster.
Accessibility.
And then they can't, you know what I mean? Like there's a post there, so they couldn't back up and you'd have to take the post out. It says reserve parking or whatever it says on it.
But, but the dumpster would be on the opposite side of the reserve. The, the, the reserve parking spots are
Yeah, can you
here and here, and the dumpster would be here.
Can you Can you point on the map where the dumpster would be?
So this, there's a sign here, a sign here, the dumpster would be here.
Okay, so far.
Far enough away. It's two, it's at least two spots over.
In theory, I, you know, we have to see if they can make it work and if they're allowed to put it on top of that grease trap, but that's what I'd like to see. But if it, if it were put there. We could switch hers, this is her spot now. We could in theory switch it too if we needed to, you know?
I, do I have to share the spot, the parking spot in the back?
You have one spot that goes with your building right here and this spot goes with Deb's building right.
Oh, we should. So they've got one and I got one?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And that's because for overnight parking, so if you were to stay there, like their tenant stays there, the rest of the parking lot is public. So anyone can park there. You're just guaranteed one spot.
Just one spot in the back?
Yes, as a guarantee.
Plus.
The idea of giving her the furthest spot so she, they would have access to it would be a good idea.
And but is the customer, customer have to park a phone?
No, they can park anywhere they want.
Oh.
It's just, uh, down here in this parking lot, there's no overnight parking.
Oh, just overnight, yeah.
Other than, other than her tenant and yours, those are exempt from that rule.
Oh.
But.
Do you understand?
Yeah. Right, right.
Really, the overnight parking thing is for.
Is, is the town has a dumpster for the town? Where, where you guys put the dumpster?
We don't have a dumpster.
Oh, you don't know? Oh, okay.
No.
And what do you do with all the trash? You carry the trash and?
We keep it in the storage room until Tuesdays. On Tuesdays, the public works come and take it up to the tr- uh, transfer station.
I see that.
There is a garbage truck that comes down here every week.
That picks up the shredding papers and stuff from the medical office.
Right, and their garbage. They come, they have all their garbage as well.
But they don't have a dumpster. They just lug it out, put it in.
Oh, you don't have a dumpster at all.
Everyone uses the garbage cans.
Yeah, which is an option too. I don't know how much gar- garbage you're gonna generate, but you could keep it in the basement and
Okay.
have them lug it out to the truck.
No, we, I don't think so. The restaurant have more garbage. We cannot just like, the ve- the office is, that's the paperwork that the restaurant had like all the food, all the smell. We don't keep.
Gotcha, yeah.
So, well, the question I think I heard over here was, can her parking space be moved to meet the demand for the dumpster?
In theory, yes. I'd have to get it approved by Sue or whatever because those two parking spaces, right, these two were assigned to those two buildings.
Right, but if it's just a matter of moving it so that she can have it emptied anytime and in case the grease pit, you're saying, they may not be able to put it on the grease pit or?
I don't know if it's H twenty loaded.
Okay, so I, I, I'm not sure because it's over my head on that. Uh, but obviously, if, if we could move it around, that's gonna make it a lot easier for everyone.
Yep.
All right.
They've already been moved twice. So it's, it's
So what's on the table?
Extra boat. Because the Lehman's used to own boat and they want boat in front of the door at fifty-two.
Yes.
So when they sold the first building to these guys, we, we changed the deed saying that fifty-four Main Street gets one parking spot and fifty-two Main Street gets a parking spot. And since they could put it where they want the spot. It's basically to have, because this is a not overnight parking parking lot.
I got it. I'm, I'm with you.
Except the two spots, so whichever ones they want, we're fixed.
Right, but that's.
And we're very happy with our spot.
Okay, we won't move your spot then. Of course, the
How, how do I know which, which spot it belong to fifty-four and fifty-two on my spot? It had the sign or, or I have to figure it out by myself?
There's a sign that says reserved right now, but we can, I can show you and
Right, this for fifty-four and this for fifty-two?
It, they're just two spots right beside each other and the one closest to her building is
Oh, one is for, one is for my desk.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I have to, you know?
And the only other concern I had is, it was brought up the sign.
It'll have to meet the sign ordinance. I haven't seen any application for sign yet.
Not, not the sign for a business. The sign that says reserved for par- oh, you know, I, how are you going to, are you gonna make it so it moves?
Oh, you're saying if that's where the dumpster is, well, we can address that with, you know, these two spaces or something. We'll figure it out.
All right.
Maybe we paint it on the pavement. I don't know.
All right. As long as you have all the ideas on how to do it.
Anybody else on the board have any questions?
I just have one quick question. Nothing on the building. What have you been doing with the old jail cells in the basement?
Yeah, that interesting. Some, yeah, some, some people, some many customer, they come maybe like, they just like don't want me to do anything because it's like history or the Bucksport just like let people get in and then see how it's look like to keep the history and then put the post sign or I said out how, how this, what happened to the jail is you to be a police station in the, before, something like that. It's you to be a police station.
That was the town office and the police jail cells were downstairs, yeah.
They said like, they don't want me to remove or something, just leave it like that. And people can't like walk through.
Put a dining room table in there. People can eat.
That's what we're gonna do.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that like on Halloween or something.
Are they still walkable?
I don't know.
It's still long.
I can tell you that there's no proper egress.
It gets stuck in there, right?
Oh. We found some old town documents that were accidentally left behind in the solitary confinement, which we, yes, it's very dark in there.
It's a long, long time ago be the, um, police station?
Ah, I asked you.
What's that?
How long ago was that a police station?
Oh, wow. Uh, I think they used it until the Public Safety Building was built in fifty-eight?
Sixty-seven, the sign on the side.
Okay, yeah. I think it was used
So you were still a rookie.
Before my time, okay?
It's two in, two room in there.
Yeah.
Two room.
Yeah.
Two year room.
Any other questions?
No.
Uh, thank you. Luke, is, is everything on your codes up to, uh, up to par?
Yep, she's done everything that we've asked. Uh, Fire Marshal's happy with it. Um, it's just up to you folks.
Any comments from Public Safety and?
No comments. The only comment was from the public about their concern about the trash, so, um, which is a legitimate concern, so. But I think, I think we can, sounds like we can work it out.
Okay.
And you guys are gonna put a decorative something around it? Is that what you're saying? Yeah.
Yeah, of course, that we're gonna do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think our ordinance requires that it be screened.
Because we're gonna move, I think we're gonna make something nice, a fun flower, everything.
There's an ordinance that it be screened in.
Yeah, anything
I'm thinking of like the hotel, seems like it's not screened in.
To so it's smelling visible.
Yeah, it depends. They've got rose bushes around the back. It's supposed to be screened so that the waterfront walkway doesn't look at them. Is what the, I believe the way it's worded, but, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, there, and I don't think it's actually the
I seem to notice that hotel.
Is it the hotel or is it the building next to? I do know what you're talking about.
Right, I mean, that's
It's got rose bushes all around the back during the summer.
It's never really escaped my notice as I walk on the waterfront. So I didn't, I wasn't aware of that ordinance on this.
Yeah.
Any more discussion needed from anyone here on the board?
Yep.
Uh, anyone entertain to make a motion?
Do you, you do public, uh, hearing yet or?
There's no public hearing. I mean, we opened it, but
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, uh, the plan for the restaurant.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve this, uh, this plan. Any more discussion by the board?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you so much.
Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
When do you guys expect it to be open?
I think we're gonna start
Thai tea even that.
I know. I, I think we're gonna start do something this spring.
Yeah.
We, we gonna start do some stop, some source, uh, construction this last spring and then move forward because I don't think I'm gonna have too, a lot of time in the summer and then we might have to open the hood and then we try to do everything like in fall. Because the, the hood guy, they said they need like a, a two month to pre-order the hood and set up everything.
Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Compared to some of the other products in this town, that's warp speed right there.
Yeah.
Compared to some of the other products in, in this town, this warp speed right there.
Yeah.
You wouldn't be talking about whole oceans, would you?
Not saying anything in specific, just saying.
You didn't ask her for those updates.
Item six, fair enough.
Just come in, just, just, just wait.
Amendment to Wildwood Acres subdivision. Applicant Roger and Mary Lenore.
I, I don't know where Roger is tonight. He was supposed to be here. Um, we can't really evaluate it. We're not supposed to.
No.
Okay. Um.
Table until next month?
Yep. Yes, go to that, look.
Time.
Okay, we will table B until next month. Item seven, administrative business. None. I debate limited public forum and opportunity for the public to address the board on matters related to land use or planning in the town of Bucksport. Rich? You're good? Seeing none, we, I will close the limited public forum and move on to item nine, uh, which is discussion. You think we need to discuss?
Right, yes, this.
Yes.
Okay, just, just up to date on the found whole oceans. I mean, I see them up there working and of course, I always thought when you couldn't get a permit, that you'd be arrested eventually, but
I thought that, yeah, to do a network thing.
But, but there's, there's nothing. There's, they're still up there working.
I've issued stop work orders.
Yes, sir.
Asked the court for a stay of that stop work order. We've filed our
I just have one question. I mean, and then how do I know when can I start the construction?
I, I will make up a permit for you tomorrow.
Okay, all right. Okay, alright.
Thank you.
Um, the town has filed their rebuttal to that and then we're waiting for the judge to, in the meantime, as far as I know, the stop work order stays in effect, but it. They're allowed to do painting, they're allowed to do closing up the building, if they're replacing those broken windows or replacing broken doors and stuff like that, they're allowed to do that stuff. Um, they're, they're not allowed to do is install, uh, you know, new sheet rock, move walls, all that kinda stuff inside. And they had been doing some of that, which is why I issued the stop work order and, um, the reason that's a big issue is because, first of all, there's major mold issues. Because of all the water that's been in there and the broken pipes and stuff, so I need to verify that there's been mold remediation done. Then I need to ver- verify the proper electrical and plumbing has been fixed and updated. And then I need to verify the proper insulation has been put in, so there's a whole bunch of things that I need to see that's behind that sheet rock, so it's most likely gonna have to come back out. Which, I don't like doing that to anybody, but they've known that they, I know, I know.
Well, they don't have the permit to even do the work.
So, it's gonna have to come out so that we can see it and we're just waiting on the court. So I spent the last two weeks gathering evidence and pulling information together for the lawyers and. That all gets submitted Wednesday to their attorney and moving towards a trial of the facts.
Actually, these lawyers seem to be running, going about as fast as the Supreme Court.
Well, it depends what the Supreme Court's ruling on.
It does, doesn't it?
Some things we drag their feet, some things they fast track, so, um, there's just some irony in here. It's, we have some projects that are going super slow that we would love to see go. We have some other projects that are going like really fast that should be not going ahead really fast. So if we get the same players on the other team, we might, you know, um, be in a better place and I like that. Um, so the end result of this is that we'll see you in court and then, I mean, it's, there's, there's no like.
I would expect the judge to rule on the stop work order right off.
Okay.
I don't think that would go to take a long time, um, the judge ruled on the, um, on our motion to dismiss their appeal and he denied it, um.
He denied their appeal with the?
Denied our motion to dismiss.
So, so the appeal's moving forward?
So what they asked for with their appeal was for a trial of the facts, which is basically like a do-over in court of what the council did. Because they say that they weren't treated fairly at the council.
Hmm.
So, we're preparing for a trial of the facts, which hopefully will happen sometime this year and. In the meantime, the stop work order hopefully will be in effect, um.
Well, the paintings looking better, so at least it's better when you drive by.
But they're. I think they're changing some of the facts. I think that's what their trial will call for.
Hey, whatever.
Okay, whole oceans?
Nothing.
Hmm.
Well, you did receive a call from somebody, didn't you? But that didn't amount to much. But it just gave us hope that they were at least still communicating a little.
Well, their communications person is no longer with them, that was the longest standing employee, so.
Was that Angie?
Yeah, Angie's no longer with them.
That explains a lot.
So if you go on their website, there is contact information now.
But, essentially nothing. They haven't contacted me at all.
In September, yeah, in September, they're, everything runs out on them.
It's five years, yeah.
No, just local.
Yeah, I don't know about their NERPA and their SLOTA and all that stuff, but our permits, yes.
Well, that, that, but I'm talking about their permits to do the work.
Yeah, correct.
Not the same particular worry about.
They don't. They don't.
In the grand scheme of things in their mind, that's probably very minor.
Cause they know we're gonna approve what are they, if they wanna come back and do something.
Who says we will? Who says they will?
Are we going to?
Yeah, I'm not sure we would.
I don't think you can say right now whether you would or wouldn't.
Right.
That's correct, we don't know.
Yeah. But, uh, the fact of the matter is, they own the land, they're paying the taxes. Everybody in Facebook land thinks the town should take the land back or, you know, I hear all kinds of crazy comments, we don't own the land, we never did own the land, we didn't give them the land. They bought it from Bucksport Mill LLC, they rightfully own it and they're paying buku bucks in taxes on it. That's another thing I keep hearing people say, they think because there was a tiff on the property that people aren't paying any taxes, that's not true, they're paying buku bucks on that property, but.
When you say buku, how much?
I I don't have the figures in front of me, but it's significant, that land is valued at millions and millions of dollars.
Just the land itself.
Just the land itself, well, and the, the downfall and the intake and the different infrastructure that's there on the site, yeah.
I mean, you know, some people like millions and millions of dollars, it's just another asset in a big portfolio, it's, you know what I mean, it's like to us, it's huge. But to them, like if you're in a multi-billion dollar thing, it's.
Don't disagree, but I'm, I'm just saying to the general public that may be listening, they own it, they're paying their taxes.
Yep.
We have no say.
Hmm.
Yep. They can sit there and let it grow up and do nothing with it for the next fifty years and as long as they pay their taxes, nothing we can do about it, so.
Like Dixon, if anything, I mean, the permits are gonna lapse.
Yes.
I mean, they had, they have a time limitation to them.
And they would have to come back to us and start all over again. They could ask for an extension, but I can't imagine that you guys would grant it with the way they've behaved, so.
We'd have to hear one hell of a story. A fish story.
Anyways, anybody have any questions about anything good?
Yes.
Did you vote, I wonder, at seven o'clock?
I voted earlier, so I could be here tonight.
I looked, I came in and went back home and tried to time it, but I wa- I di- I wasn't sure that I could duck in there and make it here, but.
You did it.
There wasn't much of a line, so.
Any other?
Anything else to discuss?
No.
No, I think that.
Item ten is adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Motion second to adjourn, any discussion needed on that? All those in favor? Those opposed?
Well, now we can have the real discussion.